I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ostriacco here, Collins here, Boyle here, Lee Owen here, Ms. Maybergson here, Bessler here. It's nice for us to be gathered together. Our first order of business is do I have a motion on the official canvas of the April 6, 2020 consolidated election results?
Seven.
Seven.
And this is just the Board of Education who's shown certificate of the election results. Ostriacco?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Boyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Ms. Maybergson?
Aye.
Bessler?
Aye.
Okay, due to some time constraints, we're just going to switch to four on the agenda. And I would like to read a resolution honoring the service of Board Member Laura Ostriacco, who we cannot pin enough for her past four years. The Board unanimously, our current board unanimously, wants to state, whereas Ms. Laura Ostriacco was elected to Board of Education in April 2017, thereby serving four years, whereas Ms. Laura Ostriacco had served as a member of Finance, that had policy education for Chief Actual Chair, Buildings and Grounds Committee, Illinois Association of School Boards Assembly Delegate Ultra-Ultra-Head, and Community Advisory Council Liaison, Education Research and Development Representative. Now therefore be resolved that members of Board of Education of Main Township High School 207 express sincere appreciation gratitude to Ms. Laura Ostriacco, her commitment and mentor, for her contributions to good school community relations, her insight and guidance related to being instructional efforts to improve student performance, concern for the welfare of staffed union family, and her tireless efforts to promote and recognize student achievement within the high schools. We have been honored to have you here. Thank you, Miss Ostriacco.
So on behalf of the Board District 207, this is a commemorative piece of fine glass that says, "Ara Ostriacco, Board Education Member 2017-2021, thank you for your four years of thoughtful and dedicated service to the student staff and District 207 community." And I just want to say on behalf of our team, entire team, what has made District 207 special, and I mean really special, above and beyond most districts, has been the co-parents, the professionalism, the integrity, the courage of our board of education. No one has exemplified that more than you. So we are going to be greatly missed. Tonight, we continue a democratic process and a transition that I know is going to continue, but your four years of service have been just remarkable, and so we're going to really miss you.
Are any of the board members who want to share anything?
Laura?
Go ahead. Okay. Are we standing? Okay. I just wanted to say, Aurora, it's been a pleasure and a privilege to serve with you for these four years. Your consistent professionalism, your thoughtful questions, your insightful and perspective on so many things has been enriching to the board in many ways. And for me personally, I've learned from you, and I'm going to take that forward with me this evening forward. And I just want to say, I know you're going to continue to do great things because you're a busy, busy woman with lots of great things that you've already done, so I'm looking forward to seeing what you do.
Sure. Yeah, I can thank you, Aurora, for all your work on the Buildings and Grounds Committee. Your great questions and all of the different thoughts that you had were really made us more robust, and I really thank you for that. And I'm going to, like Carlos said, I learned so much from you, so I'm going to miss that. So thank you. Thank you, Aurora.
Thank you, Aurora.
I just want to say thank you so much. All of you have been such great mentors. But Aurora, you know, as a mentor, I've learned so much from you. It's really meant a lot. You've always been a champion for our communities, for the diverse families in our district, and I just want to thank you for that. Your leadership has meant a lot, and I've learned so much from you. So thank you.
Aurora, I, you know, I just enjoyed sitting next to you and then looking in your eyes across, and we agreed on things, and I've always appreciated the deep dive that you've done, but with thoughtful questions that have made us all say, oh yeah, we didn't consider that. We didn't consider that. So I'm going to say, I will see you if you leave this. I wish you to downtown. You are going to climb many, many mountains in this, so thank you.
It's one of the good things. You showed us the most pleasure, and looking forward to your role for us as well. And I'll always see you are all over the great, many Asian-American community events as well. So continuing to stay out of the place.
Thank you. Can I say something? Okay. You guys are so making me cry, but I want to say thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. The four years that I've had as school board member here has been such enriching and enriching four years. You all have really opened my eyes to a lot of bits about education. I always thought I knew a lot about education. My gosh, I knew little. And that's just been expanded with all of you here, so I really thank you so much. My fellow current board members, you guys have been absolutely phenomenal. This is the best school board there is, and you know, you're actually, you're coming into a board that is just such phenomenal, phenomenal people with great ideas and great thoughts and great work. And I want to thank, you know, the staff, District 207, you guys have been incredible. The principals, your experiences have been really great, you know, us learning from all of you. And of course, the glue that keeps the group together is District Superintendent Ken Wallace, who is really, I can say, the best superintendent in the country. So my work has been such a gracious time of four years here, but I'm not going anywhere. So if you guys have any projects in life, I'm, you know, I'm here for you guys. So thank you. Thank you. Alice Rocker. All right, so now I get to meet you.
We'd like to see you. Board member of the one.
Townsley, happy birthday. So grace in class to the very end. Thank you all for that time to honor her. And now we welcome our new board member, Ashley Gilbert. We're excited for that. I marked up my sheet so much that it's messy. So what we are going to do now, so this past election, that we just certified at the beginning of the meeting, we have four members, Pre-Turney and then Ashley. And so to swear you all in after certification of the election, I would ask you to stand and repeat after me. I won't do large chunks of paragraphs like what happened to me when I did that. All right, I state my name.
I am Paul.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the Member of Board of Education of Main Township High School District 207.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Board of Education of Main Township High School District 207.
I'm going to go, you're all advocate, that's good. Okay. In accordance with the Constitution of the United States?
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
And the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
I further swear, excuse me, I further swear that I shall respect taxpayers' interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I further swear that I shall respect taxpayers' interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the Board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the Board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can be made only by majority vote at a public board meeting.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the Board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the Board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district.
As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in equitable and quality of education of every student in the school district.
I shall foster with the Board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set a course for Main Township High School District 207.
I shall foster with the Board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set a course for Main Township High School District 207.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through sound organizational framework.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students can have the opportunity to attain command and excellence through sound organizational framework.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of the students and our community schools to advance the vision for Main Township High School District 207.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of the students and our community schools to advance the vision for Main Township High School District 207.
And I realize I didn't have you hold your hand up, so maybe we'll just have your hand up to the last paragraph. I shall strive to work together with the District Superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the Board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
I shall strive to work together with the District Superintendent and lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the Board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
Excellent. Congratulations. We are going to move into District 207's Best. The seats are going to be arranged once we do the Board, which we do after the picture. So we're just going to do it. This might change after.
And welcome to the table.
Welcome to the table. Okay, so our favorite part of the evening as our District 207's Best. Due to limited constraints and making sure we comply with COVID, our students and their families are joining us by Zoom. This month's Best is for extracurricular achievement, and I understand that our time constraint in West.
Yeah, they are. They're on the screen, and they're also, they're Zoom game.
So I'm presenting Jenna Dabe tonight, and I'm delighted to do so. Hi Jenna, I'm Mr. Dabe. As a future English major and as a prospective teacher, Jenna is masterful with words. And speaking with her brought one in particular to mind for me. According to the Oxford English Dictionary, grace is defined as benevolence toward humanity bestowed freely and without regard for merit, which manifests in the giving of blessings. Jenna Dabe has given freely of herself to the Main West community and is the clear choice as Main West's honoree, 207's Best for extracurricular achievements. Jenna described her motivations for giving herself so fully to her ringed pursuits in terms of diversity and love. Extracurricularers quote, "Let me bump elbows with people I wouldn't get to know otherwise." "I want to have the ability to start conversations with a lot of people, to have a connection point with more people. I want to have a more diverse people portfolio." She said, "Our goals in life shouldn't necessarily be to get the things we want, but to quote, 'give yourself away.'" How do you help people around you? How do you build others up? She strives to be kind first, not judgmental or rigid. "See the people around you and love them first," she said, providing a working definition for grace in terms so simple that they belie how difficult this is for most people. As she speaks, so she lives. Jenna has bestowed blessings on Main West and the displaced community with her exhaustive pursuit of joy and wisdom to share with others. As president of the National English Honor Society, Jenna conceived of a way to help teachers and elementary school students who are struggling to stay engaged with virtuality. Rather than curse the darkness, Jenna sought to bring light, marshaling the talent and energy of her students, the students in NEHS, to record videos of themselves reading books. They accumulated a library of over 25 seven-to-ten-minute videos that teachers could use to help them design flexible lessons and keep kids engaged. Jenna wanted the younger students in District 62 to see what they could become. Friendly, positive, older kids they could look up to could see us as leaders and servants. She wanted them to remember how Main West reached out to them when they were little and be that kind of warrior when they get here. And if they do come to West and live up to that example, then we should appoint her as principal. Examining Jenna's list of activities, it does become a puzzle to understand how she could find even 10 minutes to record one video. In music, Jenna is devoted to orchestra, try and music Honor Society choral leaders and warrior strings, and I'm really afraid I'm going to forget something. She also decided to try out for the musical for the first time because she wanted to say she had tried it, having been in the pit before but not on the stage, and she performed in V show. She ran cross-country and is a senior leader in PE. She's in NHS and the Principal's Leadership Team, the Spanish National Honor Society, and Pi Sigma Phi, which is the Social Science Honor Society. She is also a distinguished writer, an editor of The Westerner and Westwords, the literary magazine. She's president of National English Honor Society, a member of Cool and Scroll, and a coach tutor. So when she says, "Give yourself away," she speaks with credibility. Jenna's teachers clamored to share their gratitude for her presence in their classes. If I included them all, we would be here all night, really. So I've just selected a few. Dan Fouts highlighted the rare and indispensable skill of speaking and listening in a way that honors other people's perspectives. Jenna has this skill to a degree that is truly remarkable, far beyond her years. Hiding inside this 18-year-old is a thoughtful, caring, and mature adult who is heading towards personal happiness and a life of serving others. It's great to know that her chosen majors, English and Education, will transport her into the teaching profession where I think she belongs. Her students will be lucky indeed. She just moderated our class discussion yesterday. Get out of her way. Daniela Valdez enthused about Jenna. Jenna's heart is full of love and compassion for others. She has always been fully committed to everything that she sets out to do and perseveres when the outcome might be what she did not intend. Jenna is an incredible musician, artist, and journalist. Her talents and passions are going to fill this world with beautiful words, positive activism, and creativity. Kelly Voight explained, "This couldn't be going to a more wonderful student. This makes my heart happy." Jenna is a standout leader in PE. Her organization, creativity for workouts and games, and ability to connect with everyone in class is exceptional. It has been truly special seeing her navigate through this challenging year. And the accolades just kept piling up in my inbox. Maggie Weaver said, "I wish I could see the world through her eyes." Sean Ward said, "My physics class was made better for everyone because she was in it." Todd Ruder suggested that any teacher who says bad things about Jenna would have to get fired, and he went on to note that Jenna models her faith. She lives her life and treats others with grace and compassion. She makes me proud. Two teachers who have worked especially closely with Jenna are Kristy Marshall, sponsor of NEHS and Westword, and Laurie McGowan, sponsor of Westerner. Kristy spoke both to Jenna's leadership and her love for her subject. Jenna's love for reading and writing are evident in all that she has done this year for our society. She created a successful new project of students reading their favorite children's book and making videos of those readings. Jenna took it upon herself to contact a librarian at Forest Elementary to see if videos could be of use. Since then, teachers and parents have used them to supplement daily lessons. I have received such positive feedback from teachers and parents in the community. During our meetings, Jenna is thoughtful and creative as she shares her ideas, but she's also a great listener, getting important insight from other members. I think she has what it takes to be a great teacher if that is the field she chooses to follow. As one of the editors of Westword, our literary magazine, Jenna showcases her analytical and editing skills when reading and discussing poetry. Her love for the power that words hold is obvious in our discussion. And Laurie McGowan expressed a wish that we could just clone her, but more seriously described Jenna as an absolute force of positivity. Jenna inspires others, including me, to be more collaborative, more open-minded to the ideas of others, and more engaged in the effort of lifting others up. Jenna also uses her talents as a writer to be an advocate for others, to shine light on key ideas in our school, community, and American society at large. Jenna, in fact, never does anything halfway. Every activity, from acting in a musical to editing the newspaper, from performing a string ensemble to singing in choral leaders, is done with exacting attention and boundless enthusiasm. Jenna is an unequaled classroom and extracurricular star. As my meeting with Jenna inspired meditation on the subject of grace, I found myself pondering a definition from my own childhood in which grace is a moment in which we know and can feel God's power and presence in our lives. Jenna spoke of facing grief with hope, persevering in the face of tragedy by believing that she will see her brother Joel again with God. She spoke of bringing parts of Joel closer to her because of the person he was and hoping that people will see him with her. "Maybe people will see Jesus in him and in you," she shared. Jenna lives in a way that reflects both grace and glory. She wants people to see God's love for us through her love for us, through her renal grace. She is a blessing, and I am blessed to present Jenna Dabe to you tonight as Main West and 207's Best. Jenna, can you share who is with you tonight?
I have my mom and dad with me here tonight.
Thank you for joining us, and can you tell us a little bit about your plans for next year?
Currently, I'm planning to go to Loyola University Chicago to double major in English and secondary education.
As we discussed, and give me a call in a few years, okay? Thank you very much.
Congratulations again. It's just such an honor to have all of you join us even remotely. We have a certificate for you and a small gift, but we are so proud of you. Congratulations. We move on to Main South now, Ben.
Good evening. Tonight, we're here to acknowledge Nikki. Nikki, what's the score in the softball game? She's actually, she's actually there right now, one of our captains. And ever since a young age, Nikki just had a true passion for playing sports. And when we were talking, one of the things that came out was with three older brothers, that was just something that happened all the time in her household. She's had a ton of coaches in her life, both through traveling basketball, softball, and school programs, and they've always been really supportive, encouraging, and affirming to her. One of the things that she's really appreciated about playing sports in District 207 and Main South has been she's had the same group of girls since first grade all the way through, and it's been just a real great social experience for her and one that I know she's going to miss dearly as she graduates here in a couple of weeks. She's done pretty much everything, including helping volunteer with Dr. Collins, but doing things like the Park Ridge Pistols, AAU Basketball, school-wide fundraiser. She's also the vice president of NHS. She was a peer tutor in the math lab last year, and she's also the captain of girls' basketball and softball. So just a few comments from her amazing teachers and coaches. Jeff Pommett, her varsity basketball coach, says, "Nikki has been a varsity girls' basketball player since her sophomore year, and she has been a captain for the past two seasons. I do know that she is on the varsity softball team as well. She finished her career 11th all-time in program history in assists and 16th in made three pointers. She also was Main South's representative for the CSL Sportsmanship Award for the 2021 season. As our starting point guard, she was the engine that made our team go. She was the ideal point guard in every facet of the game. Her contributions also go well beyond her contributions on the floor. As a team captain, she was fantastic. She was always the loudest voice in terms of giving encouragement to her teammates, and she was there for them to offer advice. She also had the ability to offer suggestions and help the girls in a respectful and meaningful way. Even with her commitments on multiple sports, Nikki is an outstanding student, maintaining a 4.83 GPA with straight A's so far. And quite honestly, as I look back on our career, Nikki is one of the top kids I have ever coached in terms of athletic and academic success in combination with her leadership skills. Nikki is truly one of 207's Best and deserves to be recognized for accomplishments." Her softball coach, who she's with tonight, Coach Payter, says, "Nikki is a member and captain of the Main South softball team. She is such an asset to our team now more than ever. Softball missed an entire season last year, like all the other sports in the spring. She is bridging the team and our game with the girls on the team who have not played together before. She is also our leadoff hitter, but not only because she is a good player, but because she sets the tone for the entire game. I feel lucky to be able to coach Nikki, not only as a softball coach, but also in her coaching for basketball. She is also a member of the C team." Speaking of the C team, which Nikki is a force on, Andy Trinkle, her American government and C team coach, said, "We the people, teacher, and constitution, coaching and teaching, says, Nikki is well-deserving of this award, but also not just about the award we could give. She is a humble person, but our contributions to academics, athletics, and the school community are second to none. I have found her to be a steady presence and an even tempered, yet dynamic scholar in her class." Congratulations to Nikki on this honor. And finally, Nikki's AP Chemistry Teacher, an accelerated chemistry teacher, Kendra Halloran, says, "I have had the pleasure to have Nikki as a student in both accelerated cam and AP cam, two very tough classes. What has always impressed me about Nikki is her maturity and unwavering drive, both in the classroom and in her extracurricular activities. She leads by example, consistently demonstrates what it means to have a strong work ethic. I know that I can always count her to give her all to whatever challenge she has been asked, not only for the betterment of herself, but also for the greater good of her peers and teammates. She is definitely worthy of this recognition." And when I was spending time with her, talking about the letter, it was tough because she's so humble. So I kept asking her, like, "So tell me some of the school activities that you do." And she's like, "Well, you know, I teach basketball and softball." I said, "How did I ingest you?" She's like, "Oh, yeah, I'm the vice president." And I'm like, "You did, you have to do this too." It was just kind of a cascade of all of these things that really makes her spectacular. So Nikki, we are so proud of you. We hope you're winning right now on the softball field, and we just really thank you for all the contributions that you make in the classroom, in our school community, and with athletics. So can you tell us who's with you tonight and what your plans are for next year?
Yeah, I'm with my mom and dad. I'm going to Northeastern University, and I'm not sure about my major. I'm going to something science or whatever.
Well, that's awesome. We're very proud of you. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Nikki. Bring home the win tonight. You're already obviously a winner in totality, so thanks. Congratulations again. Okay, last but at least, Main East.
Hi, everybody. It's my pleasure to introduce our 207's Best for Extracurriculars, focused on athletics, Rami Atia. So welcome, Rami. You may have noticed when he waved there, you saw that he's, so I'm going to speak to that briefly. So Rami has...
Rami stopped driving.
And I'm starting a car. But don't worry, I'm not driving. So Rami's been a really strong student academically throughout. He's taken a number of AP, you know, higher-level courses, and has also had four years of technology related to computer, computer science, that sort of thing. He's a member of National Honor Society, and he volunteers at a foundation called Al-Ajir Islamic that's focused on bringing Islamic schools to Illinois and to help younger students understand Islamic religion and culture. He's active in multiple aspects of the organization, and he stated that, "I volunteered because I wanted our youth to learn about our culture and religion and wanted to help kids get involved with it." I understand Rami plans to major in computer engineering and would like to eventually become software developer focusing on software engineering, software architecture, or computer and information systems. The realm of athletics, Rami has been a three-season athlete for the past three years, and he is on track to do the same again this year, pun intended. and he is on track to do the same again this year, pun intended. So actually, Rami has been a four-year member of the basketball team. He was co-captain of the varsity basketball team this past year. He has been... He was a volleyball freshman sophomore years. Last year's season sort of got taken away, and this year he was slated to play before the injury, so he's going to be running track, just being in track instead. But really, soccer is where Rami really shines. He's a four-year varsity starter, three-time All-Conference selection for CSL. He's won All-Sectional Honorable Mention and two-time All-Sectional Honors. The All-Sectional Honors are very high. It's only three or four goalkeepers get nominated in our section, which has over 30 schools. Rami has also been recognized as one of the top 10 goalkeepers in the state, and he is being drafted to play Division I Soccer next year with negotiations still underway unless he's made a decision since we spoke last week. Although the focus of this recognition is for his achievement in athletics, I think you're gonna hear some real commonalities. Pat Baldwin sort of encompassed what a lot of teachers said. Said Rami was one of the most vocal leaders in the classroom in accelerated G.O. He was passionate about his work in class. He pushed himself to create the best possible product he could. When Rami turned in work that is typically a polished product that most students would be happily content with, Rami pushes himself to get more feedback and to keep working to achieve even greater results. He also works hard to ensure that his classmates understand tasks and are clear on the direction they need to be going. He's worked diligently outside of school hours as well to make sure he's prepared for class. Not to mention, he does all this while keeping a second grader sitting next to him engaged in their own online school as well. Pat, who has his own small children, says, "I can't imagine even doing any work while keeping a second grader engaged in an online center." Wendy Reitz, English teacher, National Honors Society sponsor, said, "I've only known Rami well for one semester, and I wish I would have met him sooner. He's a thoughtful leader in discussion. He brings humor and enthusiasm to everything he does, and not only that, he brings others up with him. I've watched him play sports with the same generosity and sense of team. Everyone in class and on the court or pitch with Rami is better for it." Chris Peter says, "Rami's a terrific person and student. His big personality really adds to a positive classroom atmosphere." Will Greenwald, CTE teacher, says, "Rami's a great person to have in class. He can be counted upon to ask excellent questions and create great class discussion. Also found he is the most reliable student I've worked with in my 20 years of teaching." Gary Zelinski, "Rami's a delight to have in class." Chris Hare, physical education teacher, said, "I've had the pleasure of having Rami in strength and conditioning for the past two years, and I can say with confidence that he's one of the finest students I've had in 26 years of teaching. Rami has impressed me with his work ethic and character. He works hard in the weight room so that he can be the best version of himself on the soccer field. He strives for excellence in everything he does. His personality is infectious. He lights up the room every day, including on Google meetings." The boys varsity basketball coach, Dave Genas, said, "Rami was selected as one of our senior captains. He leads by example in the way he conducts himself as a student at Maine East and the respectful manner in which he interacts with the adults he comes in contact with. His cheerful, positive approach, coupled with his determination to succeed through hard work and effort, is the exact portrait we want painted of Maine East athletics." The soccer coach, Jeff Bishop, said, "It's been an absolute honor to work with Rami over the past four years. He's grown both on and off the soccer field. His dedication and work ethic has played a huge factor in the success that he has found. He leads both by example and vocally. Rami is the first person to help someone up when they fall and to help them out when they're struggling. He's always willing to help others and is always looking for extra ways to better himself as well. Rami is the kind of person that makes a team better just by being there. He raises the bar and challenges his teammates to raise it even higher. He is a huge reason for the success of our program over the past four seasons." So it seems pretty clear that Rami has made a real positive impression on so many people wherever he has come into contact. Looks like he's got a good future ahead, and congratulations. So who's here with you tonight?
Actually, I'm Rami's dad. I don't know if you guys could hear me, but I'm on a separate call from M.E.'s brother, and I just got home myself. It's kind of a very busy schedule. Sorry about that.
Sounds good. Rami, do you know where you're... Have you made a decision on school next year?
So I have made a like 90% decision on where I want to go. I just have to finalize everything with the coach and myself. And that school will be the University of Dayton, and hopefully everything goes well. And I just gotta sign the papers and have my thought meeting with the coach.
Outstanding. Congratulations.
Well, congratulations again to Jenna, Nikki, and Rami. It is... It's so clear that you are not only winners in your extracurricular activities and bring strength and character there, but also to the classes and to the character of everything you do in life, in class, and related to school. And we can't wait to see your future successes and call you Mr. 207 alums. We're just honored to know you and to have you as students. It is particularly challenging this past year to achieve all that and to keep that attitude and strength and character, and we are just beyond impressed with all of you. So thank you so much, and congratulations again. And then you are all... Go win your games. Go see your dad. See you at graduation. So any comments? Ben, let's take it from our superintendent.
Okay, just a few things. Welcome, Ashley, to the board. It's nice to have you at the table. This is a good way to start to really get a good sense of what District 207 is really about. I'm glad, first of all, that we had all the students here, but Rami's story in particular sort of illustrates a factor of complexity that District 207 has that maybe a lot of other districts don't have. And so I mentioned this last month at the board meeting, but we had gotten some questions about, "Why don't we go back five days a week? Why don't we go back five days a week?" A reasonable question. But the fact is, we've looked at it very carefully. One of the things that's unique about District 207 is that we really, when multi-tier system support, that time call response intervention became a thing, we really jumped into it. And we've evolved in our program to the point that we run it there with early warning system, but it's a combination of machine logic, but it's also the humans in the system. And so I get to look every day at referrals for our students and the reasons those referrals happen, but most importantly, who's doing the referring? And what I'm probably the proudest of is that on a daily basis, the majority of the referrals are actually coming from our students. And they're saying, "Hey, I haven't heard from this kid," or "Hey, I think this kid's got some emotional issues." And they're referring them to their team, and the team is intervening in real time. There's no... We'll figure it out at the end of the semester. It is daily. It is diligent, and frankly, it's working. As we've looked at our student success, and I've got to give Sean and his team a lot of credit for this, our students right now, as we sit here, are well in line with the historical performance of our students for the last five years. The last five years aren't just any five years. These are the five years where we really hit some new mirrors in terms of advanced assessment literacy. And so because of that reason, as we've looked at everything and looked at the fact that at East and West in particular, somewhere on the order of 80-plus percent of our students are like Rami, not only are they home, they're taking care of siblings in many cases. And so to go back to five days a week, it wouldn't have an equal effect on our students. And even at Maine South, we've yet... And then correct me if I'm wrong, because this was a day to last week. We haven't hit a day yet this year at Maine South that more than 50% of our students have shown up in person. So we looked at this very carefully. Probably we could have done a better job communicating on this and really certainly learned and tried to do better on that. Again, but I'm stating this for the second month in a row publicly for the record that we're gonna finish this year four days for the reasons that I just outlined, but beginning in August, we will be here five days a week. There's a lot we don't know. We did just hear a few hours prior to this meeting, we had heard last week that the FDA is going to allow 12- to 15-year-olds to get vaccinated. So we're going to continue to encourage, not require, but encourage our families to get vaccinated. It's important. We've gotten a little bit of, I would say, adverse reaction to encouraging people, but we believe strongly that the science supports doing it. And secondly, the advantages of having our students vaccinated are, in my opinion, overwhelming. Not just, you know, I saw a report today that the United States is at risk of maybe not reaching herd immunity because of the number of people who don't opt out. That's an unfortunate thing. But for us in our schools, our students who are vaccinated and are asymptomatic would get to opt out of any contact tracing. That's a big deal. So when they're got a game tonight, or when they want to go to class tomorrow, or they're in the play, and there's a contact tracing event, because as it stands right now, the rules still include us being required to do contact tracing. Could those change by next year? They could. And if they do, we'll adjust to the changes. We will move as far as we can within the rules. But it's a huge advantage for our students and thus for our schools to have the students vaccinated. We want as many kids as possible in our buildings next year when we open up our doors on August, whatever the day is, 20 or 21, to make sure that our hallways are full and that we've got our kids back the way schools dispose of them. So we're really looking forward to that. And again, I just want to state, we are not requiring vaccinations. And frankly, I do not see any evidence or suggestion out there from any organization, IDPH, CDC, or anybody else, that COVID vaccine is ever going to be a school requirement in the same way that like, you know, Mumps and polio is. I don't think that COVID ever will be. And then finally, I forgot to include this in Friday notes, but I was invited last week to be part of the AASA, that's the National Superintits Association, American Rescue Plan Committee, that will advise the U.S. Department of Education and Secretary of Education Miguel Cordona specifically on the guidelines in which schools can spend recovery dollars. There is some pretty tight guidelines in these schools. We're looking at that. They're looking for some flexibility to be able to do that. So I was asked to serve on that committee last week, so I'll be doing that and hanging out with everybody.
That is great. That's a great... Okay. So before I ask for updates from other board members, and actually, I didn't give you a warning. So if you want to introduce yourself or share anything now, we can do it now, or we can do it later in the meeting. But I just thought we'd ask you if you want to introduce yourself to the group or if you want to think about it and talk a little bit later. I should have thought of that sooner, but...
Okay. I just want to say, thank you so much for welcoming me. I'm really excited to be a part of this board with all of you. I'm so impressed with all the work that you do and that you've done. And I really appreciate everyone that has reached out to me and helped me with the onboarding process. And I just look forward to trying to contribute as much as I can. Thank you.
And I am gonna give her the sheet of education acronyms.
Yeah, well, give it to all of us.
Yeah, I know. People use like Kansas cipher, Brian.
We aren't bad about education acronyms. Careful.
And as a whole, we will kind of make sure we share what's going on. Sheila, you'd let us know. Have you done that on the last couple of years?
Yes.
Okay. You have to say hello to that. So, welcome again. Any updates for any other board members?
I have one. I'm on the Foundation Committee, and I just wanted to thank publicly all of the members of that committee and also the students that contributed their talents to the... They did an online fundraiser, and it was really well done, very well done, and the kids did a great job. So thank you to everybody who supported that, and also thank you to the students.
And I heard it was like, not just well done, but really successful.
I didn't hear the total, but it was really, really well done.
Yeah, yeah. It was well done.
Online fundraisers are not easy. So, and Terry, thank you for being connected to this.
Also, just want to quickly say, I was driving by Maine East, Maine South, many ways regarding all that ongoing construction. Just want to say thank you, Mary, and everyone doing a great job. And I see that the process has been going on bravely, and everything is under timely control and safely and anything else too. So just gratefully, thank you for all the construction, the partnership with the architect and the general contractors, I guess, with the safety line and everything in the timing. So, great job. Thank you.
We continue to thank everyone for their great work on our schools. They're beautiful. If you have not seen them from the outside or followed the progress from the inside, be sure, and especially the community who's watching, to follow our website and the videos and the photographs that are posted. It's just incredible. This is... We'll catch up with the innovation of District 207. It is already catching up, and it will be fun when this project is completed under your excellent leadership.
Can you just quickly say, is it about 35 or almost 50% are done, would you say?
We're gonna get to that if we need... We're gonna get to that later. We're just gonna do updates now. Okay.
I just have a quick update, kind of from the Policy Committee, because we don't have a report tonight, but I just wanted to let everyone know, the public know, that over the last summer, we passed our sustainability policy board and I've been informed that they've decided to form green teams, not one green team, and that that is all in process right now. I just wanted to let everyone know that that is moving forward, which during this period of time has, you know, doing some of those normal things have been important, and I just wanted to report on it.
Thank you. Okay, so now we go to the organization of the 2021-22 Board of Education. So first, we have to move for German Sinai. Do I have a motion for that? So move. Collins?
Here.
Coyle?
Yeah.
Hilber?
Yes.
Lee? First, I have to do this. We only do this one once a year, so it's... Owen?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Bussler?
Aye.
So everyone's here as rags?
You're here as rags.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, now do I have a motion for reorganization of the school board? So move. Yusuf Abramson?
Here. This is a here, right?
No, this is a motion to reorganize.
Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Hilber?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Bussler?
Aye.
Okay, so now we're moving to appointment of temporary officers. I'm going to appoint Carla Owen as President of Pro Tem, which is supposed to be the longest-serving board member, which does not equate to the oldest person in the board. I mean, board member. Owen wanted me to clarify. Just kidding. Not yet. So, okay. And then secretary... I'm gonna genuinely be our Secretary of Pro Tem. And now we are moving to C, election of the President of the Board of Education. Hey, Coyle, you... I do that. Oh, see, look at here. Right there.
She wants to gamble.
I'm a little power hungry. It's my big moment. You can't take your weight off me.
I'm sorry.
Okay, are there any nominations for President of the Board of Education 2021-2022?
Yes, I would like to nominate Carla Bussler for serving 21-22, correct? President of the Board, Board Member.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, Carla Bussler is elected as President of the Board of Education 2021-2022. Yes. Well, congratulations. Thank you. You know, and this is, I'm going into my third term, and I'm the successor to another third-term president, of which I'm honored to have accomplished. It is truly my honor to serve in this capacity. So do we have a nomination for Vice President of the Board of Education for 2021-22?
I nominate Sheila Yusuf Abramson. I'm very pleased to nominate Sheila Yusuf Abramson for the role of Vice President of the Board of Education 2021-2022.
Any other nominations? Congratulations. Michelle, what year were you elected?
I...
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Nineteen.
No, nineteen. And we... And then we didn't know, you were new to the board, and it has been such an honor to work with you and to see you brought to the table and now to serve as Vice President. We just felt so... Congratulations. which is also congratulations.
Thanks so much. I'm very excited.
And then appointment of Secretary of the Board of Education, I'm going to appoint Jenny Edwards.
Are you excited?
Congratulations. And Jenny asked if she should have snacks tonight, and I said, let's ease back into this. So if there's no snacks for simple session, that's my decision. Not a, not a secretary's decision, so. Okay, so should we, congratulations to all. And then I think we need to switch seats. So the Vice President sits.
So you have to.
You're going there. You two switch here, and you have the Vice President here and the prior.
Yeah, we're making it a call.
We're bringing it in next.
And this will be it, actually. That'll be your seat, and that'll be your spot.
All right.
See, did you watch all of our stuff? Do you want your mask? Oh, my mask, thank you.
And your pad, your mic.
Should have brought my suitcase. You got it?
Here's one over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You'll get a new one.
There you go.
Actually, welcome.
We're not using these cards. I want to acknowledge again also too that how nice it is to be in the same room with all of you. It's been a very long year, and we all have, I think when I talked about the Welcome Back Address in the fall last year, we recognized that none of you know the teacher, and certainly none of you have left. So it's just nice to be together again. Thank you for all your hard work. And this is unprecedented times. I'm so sick of the word unprecedented, that there's no other word to describe it. So, and Ashley, I'm glad you could join us for our first meeting together, so. So, just informationally, the calendar, oh no, we have to, so their calendar of Board of Education meetings for 2021-22 is listed in 8F, and the only one that, the July 1st is tentative, that might switch, but we, do I have a motion to approve the calendar as listed here with an asterisk?
So move.
Second.
All right. Coyle?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Hilber?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen, I'm sorry, don't say. That's okay. Aye. Okay, going into some informational items on the monthly status of finances. Mary.
In your board packet is the March financial statement. I want to point out that after special board meeting in April, we did the third quarter budget update, which went into our performance through March in great detail, and this is just a summary. We are within budget. One of the things that was highlighted was that we were not spending our contingency money. We put over $2 million in a contingency for COVID, because we had no idea at the beginning of the year what we were going to see. But then, we also had no idea that the federal government would come through with CARES Act money. So that CARES Act money has been used to deal with our COVID-related expenditures and is allowing us to save that contingency money. We are very consistent with our prior years and within budget, so I will entertain any questions that anybody has on the March financial statement.
Do you have any questions to tell us, Mary?
So it's unusual, but we don't have a construction update, because we did it at the special board meeting. So, to answer the question, we are between 30% and 50% done at each school in terms of construction. And I say that because we've got two more summers, but certainly like the Fields House was a big footprint for Main West, and the addition at East was a big footprint for Main East. So we still anticipate two, if not three, more summers of public construction.
Thank you, Mary, for adding that. Okay, moving on to instructional services, Sean.
Yes, so we have our yearly report of Illinois State Scholars. So if you take a look at that, roughly what this represents is the top 10% of students in the state of Illinois, based upon ACT and SAT scores and on what you can get. So you can see our numbers there, how we've progressed over the last few years. We have an answer, any questions you might have.
Any questions for Sean?
I do. So Sean, you know, just remind me, last year, I know it went down, the number from the district went down with that. I know we talked about it, but I just don't have a recollection with that, because just COVID and lack of taking ACT or SAT or?
Actually, these students would have taken their tests prior to COVID, so for that 20, the 2020-21 cohort were unaffected by COVID. And so each of these are individually unique cohorts of students. So, makeup of the class, who else, because it's a 10% bar, who else in other schools in the state of Illinois scored and what did they score. So, it's a nice honor, but to, it's not really a point that we dive deeply into, because it's not something that we can overly affect, given the weight that the numbers are calculated.
Yeah, there's always a little bit of variability.
Right. We're tracking roughly, we have, you know, the 19-20 cohort was not necessarily a magical year either, which was the year we had our most recognized student.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you. May I ask you a question? So, as I read this, what came to mind was, how can we get these numbers from Main East and Main West to increase and equal certain numbers of Main South students? So, Main East students, we had 44 Illinois State scholars, Main West 55, and Main South has 125.
Honestly, a lot of this tracks with demographics, particularly socioeconomic status. There are advantages that our students in some parts of our district have over others that have nothing to do with student. And so when we compare kind of students from one school to another school, it's really not a straight comparison.
So it's prior to tutoring that you believe is making a difference?
Not necessarily, but it's a factor of many that could be influenced in that.
So, so if you, if you, and I have data to support this, in the history of the ACT and the SAT, the discipline, and I'm talking decades, 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 you literally can take household income data, go up 20 steps, start with a household that makes 20, one that makes 40, 60, 80, 100, 120, and just keep going up. And you can draw a 1.0 linear line with those household rising incomes and SAT or SAT scores. It's axiomatic within the research, it's, there is a question, whether or not phenomenon exists, it's just, well, how could you change it? And so, there's really only probably two ways. One is much harder than the other, which is to create a more equitable economic system in the country, and that's a really hard thing to do. A middle or upper middle-class family spends about $14 for every $1 that a more impoverished family spent, so that's enrichment dollars, that's trips to the museum, it's adding vocabulary, it's all sorts of things like that. Or we could be just hyper-focused on nothing but ACT and SAT prep. Historically, we've made a conscious decision that rather than kind of reduce our school to that, to more, I think much more deeply, in fact, and much more importantly focused on the trajectory of our kids being on school, it's a curse of what we're talking about. So that's where we've really put our bandwidth, because if you take a long view on this, and you wanted to really change this, what you would do is you would take a student from a low-income family, and you would get them into a job that not only pays a little too high wage, but has upward growth, because now you don't just impact their life, you impact their children's lives and the, and subsequent, you know, generations of children. And so, I think you could probably, if we really wanted to do a deep dive on those numbers, do a linear regression. I wouldn't actually be shocked if that linear regression didn't show that pound for pound, dollar for dollar, that these kids were actually outperforming the South kids, because you've got to take it, you've got to isolate like household income variables, where at East, our, our low-income numbers are, you know, in the 50% range, and at South, they're, you know, below 10, probably below 5 at some points. So that's probably more than.
No, I understand. I mean, my university has actually moved away from, you know, using the SAT because of these factors, because they feel as though it is more associated with economic issues, you know, that they were able to have private tutors or whatnot, and not possibly a great indicator of how a student will do once they're on campus. I do understand that.
Then which, which university is that, actually?
Wesleyan University.
So that is the, what you just said, that is the entire national trend, and the IDs and other places. So, the good news is, I think actually this particular measure is somewhat archaic based on that, because it's just based on, the sooner that we can get standardized testing away from the peg that drives NISH and every other of these ranking tools, because what it says, what we've created in this country, is we have equated good schools with wealth instead of really good schools. I'll stack up the experiences our kids get at Main East against any school in America. And unfortunately, we just happen to educate more students than we, I mean, take, you know, Rami, it was good that Rami was on here, I just think the, you know, it's just, there's a lot of complexity with this, and unfortunately, we spend a lot of time answering questions about standardized testing, and looking forward to a day when we get more holistic measures and better measures. So.
Well, we have some. We have more students taking AP and accelerated classes, but we have.
No doubt, no doubt.
So there are other measures where we see successes, that you're talking about, I had those same questions, you know, at one point, and I understand it, but once you start looking at the data, and we do that, you'll see that we have successes in these areas.
And now you offer free SAT and AP for other schools too, so it's great.
So we're at, just so you know, so while we're on this topic, to Carla's point, probably eight, 10 years ago, we really made a focus on getting our enrollment in AP classes up. And we did, we set goals, the board set goals, first to get all the schools to a 1.0 challenge index, then to a 2, then to a 3, we hit all those goals. We're not setting any more goals for that, and here's why. What we have found in our career work is that it's actually the dual credit courses. So the course that a student is enrolled in, in high school and college, first of all, in Illinois, those courses have to be counted for life credit in Illinois State colleges and universities. AP, they can give you elective credit, and also the dual credit courses, almost without exception, line up better with a student's career path. So for whatever career path, whether it's an associate required, or some certifications, or certainly a bachelor's, those dual credits much more focused. So what we're in the midst of doing right now, we're still going to offer a good AP footprint, but we're actually slowly pivoting toward building, and I've got some, next month, I'm actually going to give a report on some of the trend lines on this for dual credit versus AP. So we think, you know, work with career advising for students, that's going to serve them better in the long term.
Well, also, some universities are stepping to accept APs, and they don't want students to graduate early, because then they lose out on those.
And, and so there's a cynical part about that. They're using AP to admit them, and then they don't give them any credit for it. So hopefully, it's, it's a pretty topical analogy.
Well, Ken, I'm glad you're going to bring that. Blueprint? I think that is a good timing, somebody will find out on that already, because, and it's, again, I'm going to keep saying this, but it is so nice to be turning it back to be very substantive, the data reports and be in person and have those updates, it's very important. I'm very appreciative. Update on monthly board requests?
We had three this month, and they've all been answered, or in the process being answered.
All right, Board of Education's policy, first reading, Sean, on 6, 3, 10, credit amounted to experiences.
Yes, so this is a press update. If you look at the memo, there's three major areas that they're updating and offering an expanded credit opportunity, current high school credit in these three areas, foreign language, work-related training, and occasionally academy. So, that is right in line with the changes in state law in those areas. And so, this is the first reading of this policy, and everything is in press, so nothing has not been vetted by a lawyer.
And again, this is just first reading, so if you have questions in the air, we are in the meeting. Reach out to Sean. We can move on to textbook adoption, first reading.
Yeah, so remember, we're, we kind of do this a little bit more on a rolling basis. Hopefully, next month, we'll have the big ticket item of sort of the larger licenses for our e-textbooks that the board will approve. But what we do have tonight are just in addition of a novel to our English-Greek curriculum as an option for student study. If you have any questions on the novel, or this particular item, we have to answer.
May I just have a good description? Okay, any questions? One good question. Will the full list go to Education Committee first, or?
They, it will not, only because most of those textbooks, if not all, will be renewal of current licenses for folks we've already approved.
Okay, okay.
So, it's more that you're approving as to spend the money.
All right. Will that be a first reading also, or second reading?
That typically would just be approval of the contract, unless there's something new.
Okay. Thank you.
Will we be able to see those contracts?
Yes, they would be something that we put down our board package.
Okay, moving on to our time agenda. Items 14A through I, do I have a motion?
Second.
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Killber?
Aye.
Bessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on number 15, New Club Proposal and Power Club in Main South? So move. Ben?
It's an existing group that's been going for a couple of years, really successful, very popular. They do like the Fearless Girls workshop that we just had, they're one of the sponsoring groups from that, so.
So it's a youth club, Sean?
It is, but it's been in like a, like a volunteer status, so like it has to kind of get its feet under it.
Like a 2017, 2018.
Yeah, so just a really great place for a lot of our female students to, to meet, and then they, they've kind of since enlarged their charter to include students with other identities on it as well, but really one of the, one of the coolest ones that I expressed to incoming freshman students, and they're like, what should I get into? Like, you should definitely do a power.
So, if I could just add something. My daughter, Caroline was there, I think the first year they had, and I think they called it Empower Her.
Yeah, it was different, yeah.
Right? Yeah, and it was, it's in the embassy, and it, I'm just so happy to acknowledge it is formal.
It's not just for women, right?
No. It was originally, right?
It was, yeah, they're expanding now.
Yes, okay. Any other questions, comments? Hilber?
Aye.
Oh, I orga, I don't want to tell you what. Okay, we're just starting with you on this one, yes. Owen?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Bessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on number 16, Approval of Technology Budget for 21-22?
So move.
Second. Okay, so.
This is a.
Yeah, with each gesture for special board meeting, it represents about a million dollars in fees. There's nothing that I can identify as fluff in the budget, the bulk of it is for replacement of the wireless access point, so that's about $520,000 addition to the budget.
And so, actually, for your application, since we literally in all of our buildings have been in the forefront of wireless, this is about the first version of updates, just because of how early we started on the wireless, and frankly, some of it also may enhance the spaces as we build up the new spaces.
And again, all of these coming 17 and 18, approval of goods and forward contracts, we did go ahead and like, please, at this special board meeting, but Ashley was not with us, so everyone else should be up to speed, and Ashley, if you have questions, we're at a time, but just, just to re-correct everyone's memory, that we've spent a inordinate amount of time on all of these that are around. So first, let's vote on 16. Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Hilber? to re-correct everyone's memory that we've spent a inordinate amount of time on all of these that are right here. So first, let's vote on 16. Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Gilbert?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Bessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on 17, membership and choice partners joint purchasing cooperative? Some move. Second. Mary, do you want to just do a quick?
Sure, so the Illinois Government Purchasing Act allows us to piggyback off in life by another entity through the joint purchasing cooperative. So we have done most of our furniture purchases through that. As many of the board members are aware, we spent like a two-year process looking at furniture. Much of the stuff that we looked at, we are now implementing. What you'll see later on is furniture awards for new spaces. So White is handling furnishing of the new spaces. I'm going to furnish the classrooms once we settle on and complete our model classroom experiment, which we kind of put on pause this year.
Any questions or comments? We're just approving the membership.
Correct.
Lee?
Aye.
Gilbert?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Bessler?
Aye.
And moving on to 18, approval of goods and awarding contracts, some of these I put together in a way that makes sense. Again, we went through most of these in great detail. And we will start with 18 A and B on consulting contracts.
Yeah, so the first consulting contract is Ally Hearn. Ally Hearn has been working with us in her sure practices and a lot of our social.
Did we get a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you have a motion? I, I don't know, I don't, my fault. Do you have a motion on 18 A and B consulting contracts? Some move.
Second. Okay, Sean.
I've taken my.
The power, you know, the power of the girls is in my head, and I'm just moved to have that kind of motion.
So she has done a lot of work with not only sure practices, sure justice, but also with our social emotional and behavioral learning. We worked with her last year, she actually did our keynote, if you remember the last time we were in person, in 2019, 20 school year. And so we'd like to bring her back again this year to continue that work. We do have her lined up to do some contract with us to start the year. Do you have any questions?
No questions, but I just have a comment. I just want to say, and I know most of you know this, but I was able to see her keynote, and I also attended a training, and I just want to say that, you know, her, her strategy is very meaningful, very practical. I learned a lot from her coming from social work, that was really amazing, so I'm very happy that we're inviting her back.
She's been really, really well with my staff too, and staff that don't normally always receive things really well, so she's been really, really impactful.
Can we talk Cory Wallace?
I'm going to go over at the same time.
We have 18 A and B are moved together.
Just want to make sure.
Nope.
So Cory Wallace is our equity consultant. Again, this would be the second year we would have with her. She's helped us train some of our seed trainers, which has been incredibly well-received equity training. I think we have four or five cohorts now that are, that are either happening or plan to happen. And we're, something that you've heard us talk about is sort of building our own capacity. And so we're just at about the tipping point where we feel we need one more year with Cory to get to the point where we have enough of our own staff trained to run those trainings and then also guide some of the work in the equity.
Any questions? I have just one comment on here. I know she's, everyone's really liked working with her, and it's been useful. Her Exhibit A, though, is pretty general. I compared it to Ally Hearn, so she's a little bit more, maybe that's because she's been doing this for a while, but.
I had a look at her, yeah.
Yeah, well, I.
I have more information.
Right, I mean, I, we've been working with her, and I'm sure she has a lot of thought behind this, but when we're entering into agreement, you know, there's, there's, there's not much that we can point to and say, well, you didn't do this or this, because it's not really that specific in here. So I, it's just a comment for the district to consider getting a little more depth on it. I'm not saying right now, but maybe you could ask her for some backup.
Sure, we do have a yearly calendar developed with her. So upon approval, we sit down and approve all of the events for the year. So yeah, I can forward that on to the board and provide you with.
Yeah, that would probably be good. As long as you have some kind of idea of what we're agreeing to, we're getting her to agree to, I'm comfortable with it. You don't really need to share it with us, just. I would, I would, I would share with the board, yeah. And I had also the opportunity to speak at the kickoff, and she's just incredible. I'm a great component of restorative justice, or restorative practices, and of course, our equity work. It's a great commitment to District 207, so those are my comments. Any other comments before we vote? 18A and B together. Gilbert?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Collins? Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Bessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on 18C, A and B bus, her bus bid? Some move.
Second.
I'm sorry, I actually have a question, which I'm, am I able to?
You can ask it after we've moved forward, and now. Yes, and now, do you want Mary to explain what it's about?
Yes, would you please help me understand, and then look at that one, you wrote in here that they're going up 25, 26%? And I just was hoping you could help me understand that, because it's not in line with inflation?
Sure.
And your other ones were like 1.6 inflation, you know?
So this is an actual public bid. So in the A and B bus contract, there are firing low bidder. They have a CPI extension that is mutually agreed upon if they want to extend their contract. Given what is going on with bus drivers and the significant shortage of them, they indicated that they would not be able to extend their current contract with the CPI increase that was written in the bid that we did in 2017. Then we go out for another public bid and allow any company to bid on the contract for bus services. As you can see through this, we received three bids. Two were for 72 passenger school buses, and one was for smaller school buses. And even with the 25% increase, they are now below bidder still. I will tell you that even with a 25% increase, their rates are probably lower than most of the surrounding school districts are paying for a like service.
But that, absolutely reasonable question, because normally, most of our expenses do will trend within that CPI range normally. This is just buses and the end of a whole convergence of a lot of factors. There aren't a lot of people out there, and actually, right now, in the helping bus companies, they can't get people to drive their buses. So it's really been just really, really challenging here.
So as Ken was mentioning, since we are expecting a driver shortage, what is maybe our anticipation in order to offset or handle if anything happens?
Well, a number of years ago, we bought a, an additional activity bus. What we've been doing this year, because our hope is that as things start to recover more and more, A and B will be able to hire more and more drivers, because they have the buses, they don't have the drivers. We've gone to a preseason meeting with the athletic directors, myself and A and B, to go through how many buses they have for what day, where, where they're able to be early, what schedules are, and then it allows us to identify those days where we may have a shortage, and then brainstorm, can we send activity buses? Can we split and send like the runners for a traffic field week first, or those events that are going first, and then allow for a later bus to arrive? Because it's that, particularly that 3:15 window where they have that shortage, because they are doing a round in Elmwood Park and then coming and servicing us.
So we should be able to find the result of if there's anything happens, probably a year later or so after the season, first season?
So we should, we should, I mean, we are in close communication with them as they bring drivers back that month. So again, before we start the fall, we will meet with A and B and take a look at what their staffing looks like for that year.
And so is it due to the fact that many drivers are feeling unsafe because of COVID? That they're not wanting to have that exposure with so many students in a closed, in a closed vehicle?
So I think it has more to do with when drivers were laid off because of COVID, there have been so many economic incentives to not return to work, particularly for what is a Boeing company job, that they're finding that their drivers are making more staying home than working.
But wasn't there a problem with the before?
There was a problem, it got better once we got some, a little bit, and now it's back to being really bad. I think you can drive around most places and see big, major advertising for school bus drivers. So it is universal companies.
There has been a great shortage of finding a driver and taking a commercial driving license, it's been quite a challenge for them, the company as well. So even companies are willing to provide aid or the testing expenses, I believe that's like $250,000 and so on, the companies are willing to pay for that to find a driver to take the exam and, you know, hiring. So it's been like that situation for a past, you know, few years or.
So there's other reasons why, that contributes to this. Our hope is that we continue to improve and that A and B will be able to service and have the drivers. So, and then actually, just for your knowledge, each time you move on a motion, then it's second, the administration, administrative staff who's responsible for it will discuss it if needed, and then you will always have opportunity to ask a question or comment. Just to, and we'll make sure, and I will ask any questions or comments. Process. Process. So to you asked, so I just want to make sure I'm responsive to that when you bring it up. So, okay, let's take a vote on 18C. Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Gilbert?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Bessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on 18D, Mernane Paper? Some move.
Second.
Mary, I know we talked about this a lot, but.
Each year, we do a bid for regular copy paper, recycled copy paper, legal copy paper, as well as a host of card stacks. We do it every year because the prices of paper fluctuate, so it's kind of a commodity. You can't do a multi-year bid. And this year, Mernane, who is a new company for the district, but not new to the educational market, was the lowest responsive bidder. As the memo indicates, there was a bidder who did not provide brand, did not provide references, did it fit in cases, therefore, we had to send them a letter that for those reasons, they were not responsive, and rejected the bid.
Any questions or comments? Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Gilbert?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Bessler?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to, we're going to take these in bulk. 18E, 1 through 5, Special Education Transportation Contract Standards. Some move.
Second.
Again, this is 1 through 5, so however you want to.
Okay, the, let's start with SEPTTRAN. SEPTTRAN is a true busing contract. It was first bid in 2017, and this is the second year of a CPI extension. They have mutually agreed to extend their contract at 1.7%. So remaining are small vehicles, taxi services, or always is a special medical transport service. They are in their first year of an extension after an initial three-year bid period. Once again, it's a mutual agreement at CPI, which was 1.4%. The district is pleased with the special education transportation services that these companies are offering.
Any questions or comments from Mary? Are we thankful that we've reached the goal? Is it great?
I know.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Gilbert?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Bessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on 8th Amendment to site license agreement made out of District 207 School Based Health Center and Advocate Bessler?
Second.
We are amending the 2021 budget with Advocate who performs the service in the School Based Health Center to add a medical assistant that we've written a grant to cover. However, we haven't received word if we will have received that grant, we anticipate receiving it, but they will not hire the physician until we amend the budget and agree to pay for it. This would, this amendment covers us through June 30th. As a highlight, the individual who provides the administrative services to the School Based Health Center is retiring, and it could be that this medical technician does a replacement physician for that, so we'll see a swap of dollars next year.
And that person will be able to give vaccinations, which will be a big help.
They have a larger scope of what they can do in a clinic.
We have been giving COVID vaccinations out of the School Based Health Center students for, what, five, six weeks now.
And we've given their yearly vaccinations.
Yes, for 20 years.
I don't know if you had a chance to see the School Based Health Center or hear about it, but it's been, it's one of the top, I think, countries.
When Dr. Bessler gave me it too, but we did discuss it.
Yeah, it's one of, it's a, it's an amazing School Based Health Center, and which just serves a lot of our students, and it's going to serve even more, I think, health, not only physical, which is very emotional, always important. And as we can see, our expenses is even more important moving forward, so I'm grateful to have that in our district. And just clarifying, Mary, this is likely to be covered by.
This is likely to be covered by a grant.
And it's a short-term.
It is a short-term, it is fiscal year budget, so that is on June 30th.
All right. Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Gilbert?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Bessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on 18G, 1 through 3, Room Signage Bids? Some move.
Second.
We were initially going to wait and bid room signage at the end of the construction project. These are the little room numbers that go on in grail for each and every room in the school district. However, after having kind of tired temporary signs, it's a little confusing, so we've now bid this, they will go into the summer, all of the renovated spaces, and then as spaces are renovated, we will be installing the sign.
Any questions or comments? Owen?
Aye.
Gilbert?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Bessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on 18H, 1 through 12, School Furniture Joint Purchasing Cooperative Package? Some move.
This is a post of awarding through the joint purchasing agreements of the various furniture for the new spaces. I would point out, this, in the summary figure that we gave you, also includes some furniture that is below the bidding threshold that we are purchasing but not awarding to the user. So if you tried to tie up the numbers of the desire, we not tie out.
You mean, we're not ordering a bunch of new?
No, what I mean is like, if you look at the schools, there's a metal stool that you've seen, it's called a flash stool. It is not covered under a joint purchasing contract. However, we are buying less than $25,000, which is the bidding threshold. So we gave you the complete furniture package that included the flash stool, but you're not awarding it through a joint purchasing contract of these.
Question on, how, how is the experience with those chairs, the, the furniture that we are planning to purchase? Sometimes, have we bought some samples and have the teachers that tried it on for many months, and then say, hey, this is nice, I'll work a while, and/or, hey, I don't want to go like this?
Yeah, so one of the things for this furniture, we, we have a process where we meet with the focus groups and they identify the types of furniture that they need, whether it needs wheels, whether it needs glides, whether it's a two-person, a three-person. So from there, then, White finds different furniture samples that meet that criteria. Then we brought those samples in and did a physical meeting where they got to touch and feel those samples. Then we also did things like, once we found a chair that worked, a waiting room chair. Across all three schools, we selected the chair that will be the waiting room chair, so that we can get better discount pricing on that. So we've done testing, we've done staff input, we've based it on our experience last year done staff input, we've based it on our experience last year with furniture, and, and a whole host of things, I mean, there's, there's, is Katie shaking your head with her staff has been involved, whether it's a flip and nest chair, so each one of these items has been vetted to make sure that it's appropriate for the educational program, that it's within budget, and that it is flexible to meet the needs of students.
And how is that related to, what's it, 1,000 chairs that we are getting a free donation from a company that's closed?
So a company is going out of business, so they had office chairs that the board earlier this evening approved through a donation, if you, what you may or may not recall is that the teacher workroom, the teachers got brand new chairs for their workrooms, but we were going to use the best of our existing chairs in the classroom, so West is now using those donated chairs to start replacing their classroom chairs.
That's quite expensive, too.
They're very nice chairs.
And we even had some of the chairs present at the board meeting, we'll be back to spin around a little bit. So we got your first name, you see that, so, all right, let's take the vote on 18 H, 1 through 12. Owen?
Aye.
Kilber?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Bussler?
Aye.
Do I motion on number 19, IGA, IGA Vision and. So move. Second.
Sure, so as we have in the past, we're asking the board to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with 64 and 62 for vision and orientation and mobility services, these are very highly specialized services that are offered for our students' IEP, we've been very happy with the services provided and cleverly as well, so.
And it saved us a month.
Yes.
How long have we had it with them?
For quite a while, I don't know.
It's been projected that seven days, it's been.
Yeah. Any questions? No changes to the terms of the treaty?
No, just, no changes to the terms, we just have reduction in FTV for next year based on the services, so we went from 1.7 to 1.4 for last year.
Any other questions? Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Kilber?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Bussler?
Aye.
Do I motion on number 20, Flexible Benefits Plan Amendment?
So move. Second.
The American Rescue Plan Act increased the spending care assistance limit to $10,005 for 2021, and in order to give our staff the greatest flexibility and allowing for prepaid dollars for this, the board would require to class a plan amendment to our existing flexible spending plan, it is a 2021 amendment only, and a lot of our employees take advantage of it.
Any questions, comments? Okay, Jenny. Kilber?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Bussler?
Aye.
Okay, number 21, calendar edits, it's just informational, those particular committee meetings of commencement ceremonies, two things, committee meetings, they're restructured committee meetings, I will have out to the board members within the week, so we'll make the committee assignments of commencement ceremonies, I think we have gotten finalized with Ashley on it by Tuesday, what, after the meeting, so, any questions on the calendar or additions or changes? Okay. Any public comments? All right, do I motion to go in closed sessions for the purpose of review of closed session minutes, appointment, employment, compensation, disciplines, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, collective negotiating matters, and security procedures for these personnel and equipment to respond to an act that would be threatened or reasonably potential danger of the safety of employee, students, staff, the public, the local property.
So move. Second.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Kilber?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Bussler?
Aye.
Okay. On closed session, we'll wait for the, do I motion to return to open session?
So move.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Kilber?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Bussler?
Aye.
Do I motion on 25 A through G Personnel Action Items?
So move.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Kilber?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?